So I think we're set for there. So there's already things that are not as up to date on this list from last year. I think if we're here or six months ago or when I was with them, we're here. A lot of the BLS, ALS supplies that we already have in stock, those we already have in stock. So we don't have to be over purchasing those. The following is medication needs. Mr. Scannell outlines some of the stuff with medication. Most medications are good for eighteen, twenty-four months. Our most expensive pain medication, narcotic medication, would be Benadryl. That's nineteen dollars, forty-eight cents per vial. And a vial would be a simple feature bill. The most expensive non-narcotic medication is Atropine and that's fourteen dollars, ninety cents. Everything else that we have medication wise is less expensive than that. Medications continue. It just shows some of the different narcotics that we have. So phenylketamine, paracetamol, and midazolam. And then some examples of our non-narcotics. And this isn't an inclusive list. This is just giving you some examples. This is a price figure so you guys can see what the pricing is. The list that follows is more of an inclusive list. That includes all of our medications. And this has to be blacked out due to our vendor being a confidential contract pricing. So that's why you'll see the blackout of the prices. But this is more of an exhaustive list of all medications that would be a part of the ALS program. And then following that is the narcotics. And then I have those questions and I have a three more questions.
Have we ironed out if the department will be paying for anybody who wants to be trained? Or is it you get trained?
We've ironed that out with this. It's not something going forward right now that we are gonna be trying to budget for. We're gonna look for grants that are available. And if we do get like grants and we are able to send people for it, my suggestion is we put them on an employment contract. That it's gonna be like a five-year employment contract. If they go out ahead and time, they gotta pay back the money. So there's a lot of ways going forward that we could look into that at this time. It's kind of the starting point going forward. We are not gonna try and budget to be sending people at this expense right now. But we are gonna be looking at grants to be able to get people if they wanna go for the training. Opens us up for more people, more options on our hiring pool also.
How many of our department currently meet the qualifications that are in your hands?
Right now we have Bodhi and then we have Warren O'Donnell. When he comes into town, he runs with us, he's paramedic also.
I would, I'm also in favor of this. But I would, I would encourage the council to set up a review process with the motion as well that we look at how the setup goes cost-wise and how the responses have been. Maybe like a six-month and a year, just so that we can, the report's gonna happen. How this is being learned and how it's gonna, that's my two cents.
So just to expand on my question from there for the grants. So prior or right before COVID day, we had a little EMS training grant. And it was basically designed for this purpose. And I was actually really excited to bring that up in that COVID day. So kind of folks were asking our plans, that's since it expired. But that program would have covered one hundred percent of the costs of as many people as we could have afforded to send the program, which covers everything. This particular grant would have covered everything but their wages. So we would have thought of paying wages if we're paying for them to go. The other option is the AFG grant, which comes around the year. They deal award to rural agencies that are trying to develop paramedic programs. And so that's another great grant opportunity as well as there's a possibility that we could partner with Great Basin College and have like a remote paramedic session here. And that would be more tailored. That'd be a longer term program. Maybe a better over a year. It'd allow the volunteers a lot more opportunities to go because if they could do that like on the nights kind of thing and attend here with like once a month, they would have to travel to Elko for like skills. Unless we were able to somehow partner with Great Basin where that I could like actually sit in as an instructor and I could maybe do those locally. So there's a lot of possibilities, but you know, short of getting all the details, you know, we don't have those yet because we just wanted to see if the program's actually going too long for us. So just guys wanted to expand on those grant opportunities that are available.
What's the interest level in the department for people already there wanting to train in this way?
I would say like full-time, we probably have like two to three that are very interesting. And then we have about two to three volunteers that are interested and a couple others that are just kinda kicking around like, well, maybe, you know.
So if an individual wanted to go get their paramedic license on their own, we would not have to hold them to a contract?
No. Only if they paid the full expense on their own and on their time off, whatever, and did it with their full expense on their own, then we couldn't really hold them to a contract? And you know, maybe then if that's something they wanted to pursue, that'd be a way they can do it and not be held down. But I strongly suggest if we do do anything where the city funds it, that we do do an employment contract so we don't run into the problem of training people and having to jump ship and go somewhere else.
Okay, another question. If we go ahead and do this, you know, we have a paramedic service and we advertise for paramedic, will they be required to paramedic slash firefighter? Or are they just gonna be?
Well, we could open that up and hold. That's one thing we had discussion of that. So like, so like right now we've got it where we could hire a basic EMT, advanced EMT, or then firefighter advanced EMT. So this would give us options where it may expand our pool where we can do the basic, advanced, a paramedic, or come in at like paramedic, the firefighter level. Paramedic coming in would be, I mean, when you say that, most people just lose their mind like, oh my gosh, the cost. A paramedic's gonna probably come in at a dollar an hour more than what the advanced EMT makes right now. Believe it or not, it's not as high a pain as a lot of people think it is.
See, I was wondering, you said we start this, but I think it was a good idea to start it. Some people, I know my niece who's a paramedic on the care flight, make more money coming over here than she does at Churchill Banner.
Yeah.
But so that's an incentive. I just, that's why you guys should work out the wages.
Yeah, and we worked that out. And the other thing we kinda kicked around is, is if we are at that paramedic level and it's something that the guys can, are agreeable with themselves, maybe we could open up some pedem positions. So rather than if we got an open position and nobody to fill it and pay them overtime, say one of the Reach or MedX people who are qualified come in and work at a pedem, which is gonna be paid less than what our overtime wage is. We're not gonna be paying benefits or anything else. So I mean, that opens us up to where we could, you know, explore and, you know, down the road, maybe get creative and make it where we have some more positions that way.
Okay, now I got a few more questions. On your support, the MedX, they support you or they don't support you? Whatever Brett's station's called.
We haven't really talked with them and, um, how do I do that? It's kind of a, they're in a position like where they're in a contract with the county right now, MedX, the company that does do ground transport services. So they could eventually try to go into, I guess, competition incentives or go to an offer with the county. So we haven't really spoke with them a lot. Reach has been the one that's been helping us with teaching with our classes and stuff there, so.
Now these are the last question, done with just mentioning general comments. The critical care transport, what is our need right now? Did we have to turn it down or who would drive the ambulance or staff?
So if this would fall in, so say winter time hits and they can't get their plane in or out. We're hoping here in the next month that we'll get the federal ambulance at the county's strength purchase. We get to the point where we have a spare ambulance to where they can't transport a patient by air, they would basically take our ambulance, their crew, go to Vegas, go to Salt Lake, whatever, come back, we'd recoup. Is there wages? Everything else that's billed for that would come back to the city. Bodhi can elaborate a little more on that.
Okay, so what program? Or do you have somebody in-house to be able to do that service to or leave paramedic?
So we would use like the Reach or the MedX crew. And hopefully we'd be able to set up contracts with them both, you know, to be able to do this. And yeah, utilize their paramedic, their RAN. And then potentially depending on how things are set up, we might have to provide like a driver or a volunteer that maybe we're taking a stipend for. I mean, these are things like really still in kind of development phase. But that's kinda how we're looking. And it's mainly, you know, to support the Reach or MedX crews when they can't fly due to high winds, snowstorms, road damage weather, stuff like that. When our patients really need to get to higher level care, then we can still get them there.
My general comments are I give to Chief Stork, walked up there, given the copy of the minutes from the December nineteenth meeting, which I had to pull point out. Most of them are now covered in this here, thank you very much. But I went through the whole process of how they're doing. Upstairs, you have to have a fingerprint to get into the storage room. I asked about the narcotics, it's a lock box. It, I was actually, to tell the truth, I was impressed. You know, come a long way. And you know, all my questions, if I hadn't, two or three times this has been presented, I feel a lot better, more comfortable with it and I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
You know, one of the questions that was asked was how do we dispose of say like a partial dose? Say you give a partial dose of a narcotic like phenol? Well, in speaking with Dr. McCallie, he said he would have that set up to where it'd be witnessed through a nurse in our end of the hospital for the disposal. So there's documentation all the time of where every bit of any of the narcotics go.
You know, I think it's crazy the price of that phenol for a money type and people pay so much more than we would.
People risk their life ends to steal four dollars worth of drugs.
The last question I have is, so with the training questions and everything that has been brought up and the options that are there, if we're not having, making that decision tonight, when would that decision be made? Is that something for next year for the budget cycle?
It'd probably be, yeah, take a little time to, we'd have to do, start doing some research and some information gathering and checking where the cycles are on the grants. So it's something we look towards probably budgeting towards next year.
So currently, if this is approved, it's just if they wanna get trained, they can go get trained at their expense. If they're already trained, we'll set them in the program right now.
I have one question. You told me about Bodhi, he's paramedic or he'd take the stash of drugs. That could have to be when he rolls in one of the three ambulances? Or is there other paramedic instruments, tools in other ambulances?
So all the, all the other stuff, basic tools would be pretty much on the ambulance. Disposal of narcotics that have to be accounted for would be carried on his person.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you for the 22 and 23. I'll entertain a motion on this side.
I would move to approve with the, for the fire department to provide the paramedic services as well as a critical care transport service with a six-month review period.
Do I have a second for that? All second for that one. Good luck. Any further discussion?
Comment? Yeah. I think this is really important and needed to, right after I went to media, the medicine center, you heard the veteran also said that twenty-seven percent of our population in Ely is retired and old. So they're older people, I think this is crucial. And it says it doesn't think it's twenty-four percent survival rate of the paramedic. Or what was the other one? About thirty-eight percent higher, I think thirty-nine percent higher over E. So I think it's really vital for this community. That's a job well done, guys.
You know, we started calling one person, but they said every program's gonna start somewhere. And it's something we hopefully try to build on.
Any further twenty-seven percent? Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, our order will be on that item four. Councilman Beecher, discussion for possible actions. Approval for the City of Ely to contract or shelter, name of McCallie, and the need to build a position of City of Ely Fire Department Medical Director at a cost of twelve thousand annually, cost to be split equally with White County. I'll entertain a motion on this side.
All moves.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Your public, here is the order. Thank you. I have followed, Councilman Spear, discussions of possible actions. Approval of the speed limit on Nevada Avenue from twenty-five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour and post-reform assignment.
Okay, how do you, brothers down there come to me? They came to me during the, when Nevada Avenue was closed. And Nevada Avenue was just being held, just constant garbage people headed out on it. I didn't realize that the only street down there that's twenty-five mile an hour is part of Nevada Avenue. Everything else is posted twenty mile an hour. But the guy was telling me this and complaining in his very same breath. He said that they come flying off Center Street and never even slowed down for a stop sign. So my comment was if you put a twenty mile an hour speed limit sign up there, they're already speeding at twenty-five, what makes you think if you're coming around a stop sign? I have to look at it and I think especially during this construction grade in those cotton, and I got a beat map, I do like to suggest a study. But that's the only street or actually part of Nevada Avenue is one way. So I typically would probably make everything down there twenty mile an hour. I, that's my opinion on that. It wasn't one way or another until I went down and realized the, all the streets with the exception of Nevada are already posted twenty. Sheriff Henry would be here if I went on that. He's a sad guy. Just me. Thank you, Councilman Spear. You know, one of the things that I did recommend when Jennifer reached out to me with the email advising that this was on the agenda, one of the things that I'd like to do is do a speed study. You're exactly right. Once Ogden Avenue was closed, all the traffic switched down Nevada Avenue. And unfortunately, all the residents there felt the impact of that, of course, because that's the landfill access, it's ESP, employees and things of that nature. So they, they did get the brunt of that. I mean, it's up to the council to go ahead and prove that, of course, we would, we would support it. But one of the things I would like to do is, is do like a two-week traffic study there and come back and just see what the statistics show before we move forward and present that. I think that's actually in the city ordinance for that to, to take place. That way we are following the ordinance, putting that information, giving that information to you guys to, to have that and to look at it and then make a decision therefore. So that's the direction we'd like to do. We can move our speed trade over there Monday, the two-week study. She has the current outlook of the statistics and go from there.
I would support this suggestion from the sheriff. In accordance with our public service.
Question I have, Sheriff Henry, was the, after they opened Ogden Avenue, after they opened Ogden Avenue, it appeared to kind of go away, sheriff, that issue. So a traffic study during non-closure down there, and this will be a lot of closure in the near, very near future, how do we weigh that with during peak usage? I mean, that's basically what peak traffic times is.
That's a really good question because, you know, if the construction continues to happen on Ogden, of course, you're just gonna have these months of variances. But I guess the question that I would pose is what is the long-term? You know, we can, we can go down there and say, well, for a two to three month period, we've seen a huge influx of traffic, but then for the other nine months, nothing's out there. So yeah, I would, I'd like to have some normal activity down there, which is right now, and move forward that study and come back and present that. And then you guys can make your decision.
I think that's a good idea. I think the speed signs down off through that peak, flashing the speed limit like we were on Camden, others pulled down. You know, I think that would have given them some hint that they're speeding. But I, I feel all the mayor, I think we should do the scientific method on this. Just not, I wanna put stop sign here, one there, one there, this is a study. And that would not be stopping anything.
I totally agree with what happens. Make that happen.
Can we have a motion for that?
If I don't move to table this until we get a study, two weeks from now, what do you want? Two weeks of planning, study at a time?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a next meeting.
Well, you would, two weeks when we, two weeks study couldn't be finished until the, in time for the ten eight meeting, it'd be the October twenty-second meeting.
Perfect.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
All second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Here is the order, thank you. We move on item six. Councilmember, City Treasurer, ask discussion for possible action. Approval of proposed changes to the City of Ely personnel policy.
I'm sure you guys all remember our workshop except for, I'm sure you grabbed it.
Are you gonna make this shorter, this four hour?
Yes.
Oh my gosh.
So basically, we did the workshop, it was an open meeting. And gave you guys a chance to look over, nobody asked any questions, so.
I really didn't see significant changes from last time.
Well, I didn't, that the changes were what we presented at that time. So it's just a matter of you guys, if we're supposed to process it, if you have questions, ask.
So my, my question for you would be, it is your suggestion that we move away from FMLA? Is that?
That's co-pack suggestion. They brought that to us, it wasn't, but I understand it. It's, we do have less than fifty, so by law, we do not have to. We have things in place that I feel covers it. We have the policy, end of policy, the up to twelve weeks of paid sick leave, which is their pay leave, which is what FMLA is. And we've always honored it because not everybody qualifies for FMLA. We've had, you have to have worked for twelve months in a position even more qualified. But we've always worked with our employees in the past. I, I cannot tell you of anybody, well, I shouldn't say that. I think there's only been two people in my history with the city that I run all that ended up being terminated. But it was long after the FMLA, it was working through workers' comp. I mean, FMLA also is just, there's other EBA that we still have to comply with. There's other factors in there.
So would you say we're providing the essential, the same benefit, just not calling it that?
Yeah, I would. I would like Neil to kind of input it to, in case I'm saying something incorrect.
Neil's on the phone?
Yes.
Well, Janette, I think you're doing a, it's a job by yourself, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things, can you, folks are being pretty good or?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing. One thing about the FMLA group, the reason why they have it at that fifty employees or more is because, because it could, it could be a potential hardship for organizations to have less than fifty employees, especially, let's just say, right now, I think the city of Ely, you have around thirty-four, thirty-five employees. If you get, in some of your departments, you only have one or two qualified, certified people, like let's just say with water treatment or whatever. And if you get two or three employees taken the FMLA at one time, the city is pretty well locked in for the twelve weeks. That, you're, it's, it's kinda like your, your hands are tied. And if you couple that with, if people take military caregiver leave, which is, which is an additional twenty-six weeks of leave, it, it could really create a hardship for the city. And I, I know the concern that possibly folks might have. And I think Janette kind of explained it there that you really have a pretty good or a pretty great spending program for your employee now leave program between the leave of absence, the extended leave and everything else. I, I, and that's my two cents work on this. It's totally left up to whatever your folks feel you have been using it. But I think Janette could speak to, I mean, you can't say names or whatever, but sometimes when the departments, because of folks out on FMLA, you're working with a skeleton crew and it presents some potential liabilities as well.
Thanks, Neil. I think, Councilman, if I could set a question, if you have something like that?
No, I was gonna try to make a suggestion. Trying to read through this again with these dark colors of green and blue, that's almost an impossibility these times. Could it possibly change the color to a light yellow?
I tried and they, we were very limited on the color choices that the program allows.
Well, it was nice and funny last time, I had the trouble reading it. And my eyes had no, I created that.
That's why we did our workshop and we went over it pretty much word for word. It took four hours.
It's not gonna stay this way right now.
No, I know. When these just were the height, once it's complete, there'll be no coloring. It'll be a clean copy and then all our employees will get to read it again.
See, I have a couple of questions for you. You know, I'm actually in favor of FMLA because such as a longer term employee, it's getting very close to maybe testing in the city or whatever. I'm back on the old, and I compared all three of these. And I don't think our policy, I know that will allow us to do FMLA anyway because it says specifically fifty or more employees in a, a couple of hospitals there. Exactly the same verbiage. And where fifty or more employees work for the City of Ely, so.
But it was something we were practicing.
We were practicing, it was not part of the policy, so we're not taking anything away. And you're also, we've seen the twelve week, oh, I hate this thing. The twelve week, what do you wanna call it, leave of absence, basically. And they're, it's the same, it's the same duration as other than like, like Neil said, on the, on the military deal. But there's one other question I had that I think, and it's not a question, it's maybe more of a concern. And after you go through all this, it's, I think it's page eighty-four, page eighty-one. I think this deal, eighty-one, you know, it deals with this COVID deal. And it's got a timeline of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, from April of this year.
Well, it's March.
I think it's April, or it's probably.
Anyway.
Thirty-four one.
April one, yeah. I can put my, but anyway, my question to Neil and to you is, I don't know if I think December thirty-first would have been substantial. I mean, that's a long time with this. And that's specifically dealing with families that may have issues with COVID.
Yes.
Do, do we really need to put a deadline on that or a timeline or something? That's a federal.
That, that, you have to define, I'm sorry to interrupt. But that's part of the FMTRA, uh, what do I call it? The central or whatever, that's established by, by the feds, Jim, in, or I mean, and one of the things, it does expire or sunset on the, on the thirty-first of December as well as the Emergency Pain Safety Act as well. Now, that Emergency Family Leave Act is only for employees to, uh, if their, if their children, schools, or their childcare centers are closed down because of COVID-19. That's the only reason why that would be in place. And as we know with the, I mean, there's a close monitoring of the different hotspots and everything else. I, I know there's discussion about the possibility of extending that. We haven't heard it yet, but I don't think we've seen the tail end of the COVID-19 yet. It's anywhere in sight, so there might be an extension of that. But it does all sudden on the thirty-first.
I know that. Neil, my question would be, my question, my question would be then, would it automatically change if, if it extends without us happening, changing policy? That's why I'm discussing this. So if the feds committed, say, a threat on March thirty-first, then our policy would terminate March thirty-first. Is that right?
Change the page.
Change the page, yeah.
It would be a quick change. It would be a quick change. It wouldn't be this full four hours.
All right, I'm good.
Any other questions?
I think the comment we pass this without the FMLA is you really need to educate the employees. Because I think a lot of it is like it's saying forever and ever, FMLA, oh my god, you'll get, we're not gonna get no benefits no more. They just need to.
Well, it can be an interesting, but I've had, I've had a lot of employees fear. They feel like, I'm having, well, I don't want to do it, I don't like, because they fear it because they don't understand it. And I'm like, no, first of all, it's not a choice, it's required and it protects you. And it's a two-way street. It's protecting you and your job for twelve weeks, but it protects us that we, you know, if we need somebody in there after twelve weeks and you're not there, we have the option of like, to let you go and replace you. But once again, you better make sure you are, you know, prepared with EBA. If it's workers' comp, well, forget it, they're there to tell me to back, so.
And if I could object, as Janette was saying as well, even though it won't be FMLA, your current policy is in place, would it stand, let's just say if someone is on a disentent medical leave. Once they can't come back to work because of a medical condition, then it is followed under, comes under the American. Once they can't come back to work because of a medical condition, then it is followed under, comes under the Americans with Disability Act in accommodations of extended leave under that act as well, so. But yeah, and we'll be taking the, reeducated to work the employees on it as well. But I, I really don't know, Janette could speak to about how many folks have actually used this, this new thing here. Since I'm around.
Any other questions regarding the policy? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve our.